I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have invocation by Reverend Thelma Witherspoon.
Let us pray. Our Father God, Creator of heaven and earth, we thank you, oh God, for allowing us to come together tonight. We thank you for city council, the city administration, to come together to work on bills and resolutions for residents and employees for the city of Atlantic City. Oh God, we ask you let this be done with peace, let it be done with cohesiveness, let it be done with resolutions and solutions for issues for our city. In the name of Jesus, let us repeat the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Forgive us the sinners, our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory.
adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required by law by the city clerk sending to the press from the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018, and to the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018, a list of the meetings for the council of the city of Atlantic City, including notice of the meeting scheduled for May 16th, 2018, at 5:00 PM, in the Hank Tyner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Backright Boulevard, and also a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on same date. All of the appersent complies with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the city council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which occasion may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off both cellphones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the council president. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You'll be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons, and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The council president will determine if the question can be answered, and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. Under reports and recommendations from the mayor, ordinances six and seven of 2018 were signed by the mayor on April 19th, 2018. Council President, have we any committee reports?
Curbs.
Health and Human Services, Licensing, Inspection, and Technology. We have three items on the agenda this evening. One is to provide the funding for the case where the, we've talked about this a few times, when people's lawns, especially on abandoned properties, get too high. The city's able to call out, inspect it first, and then if the owner still does not trim the grass, then we're able to send out a contractor. So that provides some funding for that. We're trying to take advantage of some funding to help address lead poisoning with the youth in the city. And we also have a resolution to enable the Bartram Avenue Farmer's Market. Under ordinances, I do want to table the very first item on our agenda, which is the ordinance concerning fire rings and fire pit structures. We've got some very helpful information from state fire safety prevention, which is going to cause us to rework it and introduce it back on first reading for next month. And that is my report.
Human Resources, I was asked your support on the dental plan. Also, the Human Resources Support Department is currently interviewing for senior jobs, as well as youth jobs for the summer. And they continue to work hard on all the changes that come before them. I also would like to congratulate the Reverend Tucker and Yolanda Lady for the good work they're doing for the city in terms of the employees. Thank you.
Council President, public safety and public works. We have seven items that are on the agenda tonight. But 275, we'd like to take that off. We'd like to have it pulled, to further notice. 275, for the record, 275. And I just would ask the council to support the rest of the items. What happened? Oh, you couldn't hear me, I'm sorry. We have seven items for public safety and public works on the agenda for tonight, and we're going to pull 275 until further notice. And I would ask for, council, would they support that? Thank you very much.
Mr. President, the planning and development committee met on May 3rd, and we have several items on the agenda that I would ask for support of my colleagues. But before I do that, Resolution 308 and 309 is sponsored by myself, Councilman Randolph, and has Councilman Curtis as his name on it. But for the record, that should be stricken, because that's housing authority business, and he was a commissioner of housing authority, and therefore he's not going to be the sponsor of that resolution. Only for that reason, Mr. President. In addition, I would ask for support on all the resolutions that we have here related to planning and development. And none of the resolutions that we put forward requires taxpayers' money, but they all are for the betterment of the city. I would pay special attention to all of them. With regard to 197, which is Choice Restaurant, which is open now, it's a local business, employing local people, and we work with the administration to come to a solution that will give them the funding that they need and enable them to move forward. So I would ask for support on that in addition to the other resolutions that are listed from planning and development. That's my report, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Right. Reverend on Finance, we had a presentation from John Henderson and Atlantic City Seafood Festival, which took a hiatus from the city's property at Beta Field last year and held the event at Showboat. Due to an error, we will be introducing that on new business. We agreed to the terms. We're excited to have the Seafood Fest return to Beta Field, and we appreciate Mr. Henderson's hard work, and we look forward to having another successful event in the city. The dates are September 8th and 9th, just for the public's information. We also had a presentation from Mike Bender and Mike McMenamin. They want to bring the Manny Young Bike Race here, another tourist attraction. They would estimate about 50,000 people will attend, and it will be a five-mile race starting from Ventnor. We had several discussions. I'm going to take a pause in my report to ask Mr. Swans, from what we heard, that they had a meeting with special events and people. Where were we at with that?
I'm sorry, Council President, repeat that.
No, I said, no, where were we with the Manny Young Bike Race? I heard that they had a meeting with special events that went pretty well. I know that we were aiming to have it on the agenda of some sorts, but...
I wasn't present at that particular meeting. That would have been one of the attorneys in my office I could find out, report from.
Well, can anybody give us an answer? So if someone in the administration is dealing with...
Nancy Agreed is normally involved in that, but she's not here tonight.
The Manny Young Bike Race, I heard it went through the special events process, had a meeting, we were looking to entertain.
Well, Council President, we'll get back to you on that.
Council President, before we go further on that, they have to have an answer soon, and since we only meet once a month, can we put a plan in place to move forward this week? Because they have to meet, they have to get their sponsors and everything else together. Is there a plan in place to make it by this, one way or the other?
Anthony, if you could reach out to Nancy and just give us a report in the meeting, and once we get the report, we can verbalize it to the public. I'll do that, Council President.
If need be, will we have to have a special council meeting, unless it can go through without council, or... Just to cover our bases both ways, because the clock's ticking, and we're running out of time on that.
Well, we'll see what Nancy has to say, and we'll go from there. Also, work miscombs will be discussed in executive session. Some balances have been canceled off. The temporary budget, we want to authorize $58,431 tonight. We are going to make...
$18,000, Mr. President?
$58 million. That's what I said.
You said $18,000.
That is no, that's $58,000.
Not $58 million?
It's $58,000. Listen, I'm in the meetings, I know what's going on. I'm just making sure they're paying attention. Also, we amended in Chapter 57, code the city of Atlantic City, which is going to change communication and public safety. This will make communications into its own division in public safety and not its subdivision in police civilians. And I asked a question, I said, does this mean that we're moving to privatize or do anything with dispatch? And the answer, you know, is no, this has absolutely nothing to do with it. Also, on the agenda tonight is city council authorized an exploratory committee to possibly bring minor league baseball back. As we know, as a city, we are constantly trying to diversify our attractions and options with the monumental decision that the U.S. Supreme Court made by having sports gaming allowed for in Atlantic City. That's another attraction that should be a nice shot in the arm. Just so everyone know, the bills haven't been released by the legislature yet. That's something that's going to happen, like, quick, fast, in a hurry, and we want to be on top of this. And as a city, we really have to come together, because, yes, sports gaming got passed, but in the initial draft that I saw, I don't like it for what it means for Atlantic City. Of course, the state is going to have to get taxed for gaming. They would tax a person, if you go to any of the casinos or racetrack, 8.5%. And if you're doing it online in the confines of your home or wherever you are, it's 12.5%. So the incentive is to come to Atlantic City or the racetracks, which, we support that, but I don't like the fact that, from what it reads in its early stages, is that the city of Atlantic City only get 1.25%. So if we did 100 million, excuse me, sports gaming, the city's going to have 1.25 million dollars. I mean, that's money, but that's not enough. Due to the fact that we can't get any legacy costs, the room tax, you know, the hotel tax, the same thing, the luxury tax, the parking, it's always an excuse there. We need to do what we need to do to capitalize on any and all revenue streams as possible. So I hope that we're prepared to go to Trenton this time in numbers and fight the good fight for just a little bigger piece of the pie. Also, as far as baseball, we are going to vote tonight to give Mr. Frank Bowden 90 days to come up with a plan. And every 30 days, he's going to meet with the city to discuss where he is. There is no downside to this deal. They would have to purchase a team of $3 million in the Atlantic League professional baseball, and if they go to the Can-Am League, it'd be about $1 million. But if any of you have seen the stadium, it's in severe disrepair, and the city of Atlantic City has no money to put into it. So we're talking about a total of about $1.6 million in free upgrades. What I mean, free upgrades, this is going to be on their dime, not your dime as a taxpayer's. So we have nothing to lose. If in 90 days he comes back, we're going to be in the same position that we are today. But we do have an opportunity to get a brand-new refurbished stadium, because that's one of the best sights in the city to watch a game, to attend a concert with the sky line. So the upgrades will include all refurbished, rehab, front offices, dugouts, any of the seats are in disrepair, the sky boxes, which the city owns, the press boxes, and, yes. And a big thing, it includes lighting and a new professional baseball field, because if anyone has ever gone to an event there since the light structures have been down, it caused promoters or anyone that wanted to put on the event an arm and a leg to bring light trees in to do that. So this is a win-win, you know, for the city. If he can produce and we come to an agreement on an MOU, by this time, you know, next year, we'll be having baseball. Not only baseball, that's a jewel. We can attract concerts, all type of festivals, and the city stands a chance to benefit. So I hope my colleagues would support that. And lastly, once again, in the taxpayers' business, in 2014, I came up with an idea thinking outside the box, and, you know, some people thought it was funny, but like I said, we knew it was coming down the line. It wasn't really funny, because if you know that, you know, the totals and everything, the research that I've done, you know, that $15 million could have went a long way in those dark years of '15, '16, and '17. But in talking to Jim Johnson and meeting with the lieutenant governor for a couple of hours, you know, they agreed to take a look at it. There's no commitment either way. I think before, you know, we didn't really have an ally in Trenton, and, you know, everything to Atlantic City was no, 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 just like when he pulled the $33.5 million from under our feet. But it's a new day. The transportation trust fund isn't bankrupt anymore, so that excuse is out the window. But the plan is to increase the toll plaza at Pleasantville, exit file on the expressway, because that's a direct beneficiary of Atlantic City. You either leave in Atlantic City, or you go into Atlantic City for whatever reason. And in this day and time, we need to create more revenue streams for the taxpayers, because it's only currently the taxpayers right now. If we were to increase that toll by 75 cents, it would make it $1.50. Now, I know a lot of people will complain about that and say, well, I just take Route 30, or I just take Route 40. But let's be serious about this. We are a world-class gaming destination with tourist town. Atlantic City is big around the world, might be small to the people that live here. If you can pay $12 to go New York, cross those bridges, if you can pay $5 to get in the city of Brumley Love, Philadelphia, you can pay, what is it, $3 or $2 to get in the Summer's Point off of the exit, what would be the harm in paying an additional 75 cents? Especially a taxpayer you're paying yourself. So based on the research that I did in 2014, 20.6 million cars came through the toll plaza at 75%. That was around $15.7 million. We can set it up, and I spoke to the state through DCA, where we create a separate account. We won't use it to pay salaries, we won't use it to buy any equipment or anything, and it'd be geared to tax relief, because it's about time that we do that for the residents of Atlantic City. So our budget this year, as we speak, is around $222 million with all the grants in it. Can you imagine shaving $15 million off of that? What would our taxes look like? Our budget to be down to $200 million, especially when we get the extra transitional aid from the state this summer? You know, we'll be in a good position. So we got to get out of that things can't happen. We got to think outside the box, we got to be bold, we got to be courageous, we got to be different. And this is a signal, you know, all the people that are complaining don't pay Atlantic City taxes, but they take advantage of the resources here. Now it's our turn, so hopefully, if this passes and discussion with the governor, the S.J.T.A., and other state officials, this will be something that, you know, we can all be proud of. Finally, we have another revenue stream. So that's my report.
Mr. President, could we ask the solicitor to do a resolution about what you talked about with regard to the bill for the legalization of a scorch bed? Because as Councilman Tippett has mentioned, since we only meet once a month, that we could pass to send our citizens...
I mean, that's a good idea, but, you know, as we know, everything that we read, that's why I said at first glance, that we read in the newspapers isn't the gospel. Nope, I don't mean to take a shot, Dave. But, I mean, I understand it, but as you know, with anything in the state of New Jersey, there'll be herons, so we'll try to get buses or whatever to go up there again.
The only reason I'm saying, because they're fast-tracked. I know Senator Sweeney said he wanted, yeah, he wanted to do it in June, I think. Ninety, he wants to have it on the Senate agenda, and that's before we beat the...
I mean, my only kickback on, I mean, the concept is great, but what numbers do we know? You know what I mean? We don't have their version of the bill. And if we need to call a special meeting or something, I don't have no problem with that. Only need five people, we'll be in and out of here in, you know, 10 minutes. But it's something that we would need to do, and I shared that with Mr. Cunningham before the meeting, that we need to fight for more than 1.25 if what we read is true. And I know they might not have that much Atlantic City fatigue in the legislature. We ain't been up there in two years, so, all right? That's it, on the agenda.
Council President, I did have an opportunity to speak to one of my attorneys who attended the meeting regarding the bike race. It's proceeding through special events, so it doesn't require any council action. So it should be able to move forward.
All right, but just can you give us an update as we go along? And one more thing on the agenda, is an agreement with the Vietnamese Community Center to use the old People's Building in Chelsea Knights. That's it, on the agenda.
Communications and petitions are listed on the agenda, will not be read into the record. We are now at Resolutions of Recognition. Resolutions of Recognition, families that are here, 27...
To my colleagues, can you look at the Resolution of Recognition and see if you recognize any people that are here? I know 278 is here. Is anyone, I'll just call out. Is anyone here from the family of Betty Watson? Is anyone here from the family or the person, Ohella Beax? 278 is here. Anyone here for National Foster Care Month? Anyone here for the family of Maya Bailey?
Yes, except you and my wife.
Anyone here from the Rites of Passage? Anyone here from the Atlantic City Fire Department? Nobody's here? Okay. Are the three officers here that are being honored? All right? Okay. All right, so if my memory serves me correct, I make a motion to group 271, 272, 292, 294, 295. That's it. May I have a motion? Move, second. Move by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Okay, just to confirm, that's 271, 272, 292, 294?
Yes, 295.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. We have Resolution 278, and this is a resolution of condolences to the family of Idris Dave Carpezi.
Have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Randolph, second by Shabazz, and Marsh.
Whereas before restaurateur, Idris Dave Carpezi established eateries in the South Jersey area, he was introduced to the world as the youngest of six children on his father's farm in a small Albanian village in the Balkan region. And whereas growing up in a community marginalized by political turmoil and poverty, Dave often dreamt of coming to America, where someone told him that the streets were paved with gold. A fiery and ambitious young man, his first business venture was selling eggs with his nephew at the farmer's markets after school. At the age of 19, Dave made the bold decision to pursue the American dream, which meant dropping out of college at the behest of his father, who believed that his son would make a more comfortable living as a history professor. He arrived in Staten Island, and three years later, he met his future and supportive wife, Jerry, of 31 years. And whereas, eventually, he moved his family to Atlantic County to establish his first business, the Pizza Factory in Pleasantville. Motivated to make the most of his opportunity, Dave would successfully go to found Geno's Pizza in Ventnor, naming Geno's as a homage to the first pizzeria that ever hired him, and Geno's Pizza in Atlantic City, Pierre's Pizza in Margate, as well as solely organizing cultural festivals for the Albanian-American community. Embraced by the locals who called him Geno, he also gave back to the Atlantic City community. And whereas Dave believed in the importance of helping others for the sake of sharing opportunities, he continued to live, thrive, and touch lives with his generosity in South Jersey until his passing on January 11th, 2018, at the age of 52. And whereas the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby desires to pay tribute to the life and legacy of Idris Dave Carpezi, and hereby recognizes and commends his dedicated and devoted efforts to promote the health and well-being of Atlantic City residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Atlantic City hereby joins in the mourning of the passing of Idris Dave Carpezi and expresses heartfelt condolences to his family and friends. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. Who shall emerge? Anything you'd like to say?
Speak.
The other one, sorry.
Face the city council. You can take the mic out, Swann.
Should be on.
The 10th council member.
You said the 10th council member?
It might be on mute.
Hello?
I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to talk about someone that I thought I'd had more time with, and I've been thinking about a lot lately, that's my father. And I wish he was here today to see you all, because he came from halfway across the world, and I guess they told him there would be gold here. If you find it, let me know. But he chose to live here, and to call this place home and serve refined people. He believed in this city a lot, and he believed in making something out of nothing. And my dad, you know, he helped a lot of people, and I'm told he was very generous by a lot of people even standing in this room. And he was just the type of person that he knew the struggle of life, like all of us do. And if you wanted to make a mixtape, he'd give you money to make a mixtape. If you wanted to write a book, he'd give you money to publish a book. And my dad definitely didn't listen to music. He listened to Pinky in the Morning every day on radio, which as a 12-year-old, that was torture for me, but... And he definitely didn't have the time to read, because he's too busy serving refined people. And they often don't have awards for that, but today they do, so thank you so much.
And for those of you who don't know, you know, her father was the owner of Geno's Pizza. He unfortunately passed in January. Dave was a great... Uh, Dave was a great guy. Um, he didn't understand a word, no. Anytime we went to him to donate food for the community, um, you know, he was always there. Um, I'm happy to say that that's a restaurant in the Second Ward, so it's home of the Marty Small Special, which is a recipe, um, I have to charge you if you ask me for it. But, um, you know, he was a great guy, and, you know, we appreciate all the things that he's done for the city, and hopefully, um, you know, the people there that are still, you know, running the show will, um, honor his legacy and give him back to the Atlantic City community.
Thank you.
Don't act like you ain't never eaten. Come on, man, I'm putting you on blast tonight. I ain't get last week. Special, special. The special, the special. Marty's Bar Smith. They didn't know what it was, but they gave you something.
We have resolution 321, and this is a resolution recognizing the Atlantic City Police Department.
All of them, before we proceed. That's the fire. My colleague, uh, Speedy, noticed something at the bottom of the resolution, um, where it said Fire Department. If we just make that correction on the official dots?
Instead of police, it's fire.
I just...
Yes, fire.
I got it. Atlantic City Fire Department.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second, move by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Whereas Atlantic City Fire Department has the responsibility for maintaining the safety of the residents and visitors to the City of Atlantic City. Whereas the Atlantic City Fire Department, under the direction of Chief Scott Evans, has made significant efforts to be responsive to the needs of the community and to develop community relations, relationships. And whereas the Atlantic City Fire Department has participated in heroic and lifesaving actions without recognition. And whereas the job of a firefighter is a difficult one, and one that requires constant preparation and training as they put their lives on the line. And whereas the City Council desires to recognize the Atlantic City Fire Department, not only for the work that they do, but for the tremendous sacrifice that firefighters have made and continue to make on behalf of our residents. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of City of Atlantic City hereby proudly recognizes its Fire Department and issues its heartfelt gratitude for the service they provide. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Absolutely, yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation.
Thank you. I just made a phone call, trying to get a couple guys over here. I guess they could get over here. But, um, I'd like to thank, uh, City Council, uh, thank everyone, thank all, all the residents that visited Atlantic City for their appreciation for, uh, the Atlantic City Fire Department. Uh, this has been, uh, very trying times for us over the last, uh, couple of years, uh, working under some very dynamic, uh, conditions. Uh, you know, our firefighters respond to emergencies, uh, from, from administering Narcan to, to doing CPR, assisting with, with first responder calls. Uh, we've had our busiest two years that we've ever had, um, in recent memory. Uh, we go to calls not only to vehicle accidents, uh, vehicle accidents, do extrications, we go to elevator emergencies. Uh, we've had extraordinary amount of elevator calls over the last two years as our buildings get older. Um, so our guys, um, really have stepped up and went above and beyond, and I couldn't be more proud of them. Uh, the job that they do, uh, coming to work every day, uh, putting their lives on the line for the people of Atlantic City is, is something to be very proud of, and I'm very proud of the work that they do. Uh, so I would thank you again for, for the recognition. Thank you.
We have resolution 323, and this is a resolution to recognize and commend Officer Ryan Cobb, Officer Wahab Malik, and Officer George Mancuso.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Move by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Whereas on Tuesday, April tenth, two thousand eighteen, at nine fourteen PM, Officer Ryan Cobb, Officer Wahab Malik, and Officer George Mancuso responded to a report of an individual walking in traffic at Virginia and Atlantic avenues. And whereas the individual appeared to be under the influence of alcohol or narcotics, was located in Pennsylvania and Atlantic avenues. He ignored the officer's request to stay on the ground while an ambulance was en route, and attempted to crawl toward traffic, whereby creating a life-threatening situation jeopardizing public safety. And whereas the individual became agitated and reached for Officer Cobb's baton, ripping it from the officer's belt. The individual refused to drop the baton, was ultimately restrained by the officers without further incident. Whereas, as frequently witnessed throughout the nation, the apprehension of individuals who resist arrest and attempt to disarm a law enforcement officer often end tragically. These incidents result in community outrage and erode the relationship between law enforcement and the community. Whereas Officers Cobb, Malik, and Mancuso handled the incident of April tenth, two thousand eighteen, with extreme care and caution. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City recognizes and commends the swift action of Officer Ryan Cobb, Officer Wahab Malik, and Officer George Mancuso, to prevent a dangerous situation from escalating and potentially causing loss of life, and extends a sincere appreciation for their professionalism and outstanding efforts to protect and serve the public. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation.
We're very honored and grateful for the recognition, and we're also very pleased we're able to represent Atlantic City in a positive manner, so thank you.
May I have a motion to, uh, reintroduce 294?
Second.
Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph.
294?
Yes, we have, we have all the, all the ones, but they're here, and now we want to give them their recognition.
Okay, bringing on resolution 294 to recognize Maya A. Bailey.
It's already been voted on, so I can just, just read it.
Just read it. Whereas it is incumbent upon the City Council to recognize and commend the achievements of Atlantic City residents. And whereas Maya A. Bailey is a lifelong resident of Atlantic City who attended public schools and is continuing her education at Rutgers, the State University. And whereas Maya completed her undergraduate education at Rutgers University in Camden, New Jersey. While enrolled at Rutgers, she concentrated on criminal justice and sociology. And whereas Maya A. Bailey distinguished herself as a student while at Rutgers. She will continue her education at the master's level, and now therefore be it resolved that the Council of City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes, commends, and salutes Maya A. Bailey for her significant, significant accomplishments, and extends best wishes for continued success in all her endeavors, and we do have a presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Big Bailey. I'm Maya's uncle. Maya is graduating this evening, and she could not be here. I'm accepted on her behalf. Thank you very much.
This President, I just want to say, I thank, uh, thank my colleagues for the support of that resolution. I think it's important that, uh, we recognize when we have good things that happen, when it interacts between the police and the, uh, community. Too often, we've seen across the country that there has been negative, uh, reactions from the community when things happen, uh, out of the normal sequence of events. And I just want to commend the chief and those officers, and all the officers, uh, for their restraint and their professionalism, uh, in a difficult situation. And, um, I am glad that it turned out like it did, and I would just encourage them, uh, as they go forward, that we are supportive of their, they exercise the highest degree of professionalism and concern here.
Alright, we are a public comment on agenda items, including welfare. Michael Graham?
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Graham. I retired nineteen months from the City of the Atlantic City Police Department. I have yet to receive my terminal leave payment. Uh, I left, along with twenty-six other retirees, we left in the calendar year of two thousand sixteen, and we left pre-state takeover. Of those twenty-six employees, two of them received, uh, two of their four installments of their terminal leave payment. Today, we're still here, we want to know when we'll get our money. In two thousand seventeen, the budget, there was three million dollars allocated in the terminal leave account. Has the three million dollars carried over to the two thousand eighteen budget? The twenty-six employees have given at least six hundred fifty years of honorable service to the City of Atlantic City. Majority of us are native sons and daughters of Atlantic City. We do serve, we're treated better than what we have. Can you answer? Thank you.
That's their official clock, no matter what else you hear.
To add to that, a little of y'all might not know who I am, my family. The police building is named after my father, Clayton Grant, who was, uh, shot and killed in the line of duty. The council chambers that we stand in here today is named after my stepfather, Henry Hank Tyer, who was the first council president of the City of Atlantic City. I mean, the way you're treating, uh, my family altogether, we gave, uh, we've given a hundred years of service to the city. My brother Charles was Assistant Director of Revenue and Finance for the City of Atlantic City during the Matthew era. We've given a lot of our service, we're native sons, a lot of the retirees, Ms. Derry, Ava Damaport, I can go on and on. Is this how you treat your, your retired employees that are native sons and daughters of the city? Okay? Like I said, there was three million dollars in the two thousand seventeen budget allocated for terminal leave payment. Where's that money in the two thousand eighteen budget? We left pre-state takeover. We got nothing to do with the police, the PBA, or the Fire Department, their unions. We have nothing to do with that. The state's trying to bunch us all in, and we have nothing to do with that. We left before the state came in. And when they did come in, they continued to pay people. City crossed their own line in the sand. They paid Deputy Chief Nolan, received payments after they came in on November the eighteenth. So did Deputy Chief Skip Bernice. They both received a hundred fifty grand on November the eighteenth. And then, in March twenty-fourth, uh, two thousand seventeen, they received, uh, I believe fifty thousand and forty-seven thousand collectively. So the state didn't even honor their own, uh, line in the sand when they said terminal leave payments were stopped. So we want to know what's going on. We want our money. Thank you.
Um, Mr., I saw, I saw that you had a sheet of paper. I guess you were referencing it? Is it, are there numbers on it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could you share?
Yes.
I mean, not publicly, but if you can give the document to the front table?
Yes, sir.
And that way, if we're referencing things with the state, you know, they'll, they'll know exactly what you're talking about. Mr. Cunningham, would you offer any comment, any update?
Mr. Uh, Council President, have you, can, can you give it to the Council President? I don't, Mr. Stinson may get it, he might fudge the numbers.
No, 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 no personal attacks. And plus, that's my cousin. You gotta watch yourself. You ain't know that though, did you?
Uh, Council President, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Graham before the meeting. Uh, I do understand the issue. Um, a solicitor came up to me, um, I think because there is current litigation orders should cause, I can't comment publicly about the particular issue, but I can answer Mr. Graham's question. I, I didn't know at the start of the meeting, but I have confirmed that the amount in the terminal leave trust fund account, um, because it's a trust fund account, is left, uh, untouched and remains there.
Now, now, I just have a question, and not for Mr. Graham's sake, because you know, we get all kind of phone calls. Even, just say if I retired, and I'm a city employee, and I retired September of two thousand sixteen, am I still bound to the fifteen thousand dollar payroll, even though I, I mean, um, terminal leave payout, even though I beat the state takeover buzzer? Or is it?
I, I think there's a dispute over that particular question.
Next.
Charles LaBarre?
Charles LaBarre?
Uh, ask him on his behalf.
No, we can't, we can't do this. He couldn't make it?
No.
Okay.
Charles Goodman?
Before you start the thing, Miss Paul. Yes, uh, Council President, uh, on that issue that you spoke of in regards to the casino, the sports betting, this, this was, this is not my prepared remarks. What I, I wanted to totally agree with you that we need to take buses up to Trenton. A letter is not going to do a darn thing. Uh, 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 might not even be read, but we need to take buses. And let me tell you something. We, as the City of Atlantic City, the casinos that are in Atlantic City, all your casinos in this country, Atlantic City has the least taxed casinos. Philadelphia is like twenty-some percent, and I ain't seen none of them casinos close their door, because they, they getting...
Fifty, fifty.
Yeah, yeah, they getting taxed way more, and none of them are going to close here. So not only do we not get our money from the taxes that we supposed to, then they go to court. The poll is a part of my prop, my prepare, so I'll get to that. But you're correct. It will be a sin if the city gets only 1.25% of the money. It will be a sin, and we should do something about it by going to Trenton and other things. Now, let me get to my prepared remarks. Oh, you, you can start the clock now. Okay, so getting to, everybody has received something with Atlantic City, uh, in the last couple of years. The county just won, Mr. Tibbits, the county just won, got their increase, okay? Okay? The casinos have challenged the poll. They getting less up to be taken out. Uh, the private companies come from the outside, they come in here stealing our money and our jobs from our people, okay? Uh, uh, all in terms of the police. My question to Mr. Cunningham and the state, what is the City of, of Atlantic City residents, and of those persons that live in, in, in this community that look like me and all, on the north side? When are we gonna get some? When are we gonna get some roads? When are we gonna get public safety, or public safety other than when it's a shooting? That they come over in our community and mess? When is that gonna happen? Okay? Uh, uh, when is the, the benefits of jobs gonna happen? What is the benefits of the morale of this city hall, whose workers haven't been, haven't gotten an increase in four to five years? When is that gonna happen? Uh, but the most important thing is the safety. The other thing, what if our residents are going to be in a part of recruitment for the Atlantic City Police Force and the Atlantic City Fire Department? We got a class too. When are they gonna progress? They're Atlantic City guys. When are they gonna progress to be a part of the full force? You know, you got two new casinos opening. There's no way in the world, when are we going to benefit from all the process? We could be just like Atlanta on a smaller level. Reed Maynard Jackson, guys on the dais, Reed Maynard Jackson book, uh, bill, book. He, in the Atlantic City, he was Atlanta mayor, and he had the council behind him. And they didn't say ask and all of that. They mandated that certain percentages would go to the residents of Atlanta, that would go to residents that look like me. I am unapologetic. Atlantic City first, our residents first, and people that look like me, that been in this city all their life. When is it going to happen?
Joe Hicks?
You want to speak, Mr. Hicks? You want us to bring the mic to you? You want us to bring the mic to you? You sure? All right. Hope you feel better.
I can't read his name, Steve from the Scadaway.
From the Scadaway, New Jersey, we have to push the mic, thank you. Yeah, welcome, councilmen and all. I'm not sure about the right type of address, but anyway, please forgive my appearance, I usually come in a suit and tie, I don't, I didn't expect to be here, but I consider Atlantic City my home away from home, I've become it ever since Resorts has been here. And I just want to offer my services to Atlantic City. At one time, I was in a homeless shelter twenty years ago, you know, and I was able to get help, and it's fine and dandy with all this highfalutin benefits and taxes and everything, but I'm here to address the public health needs, because I was like some of the people, I'd go down the street, and nobody gave up on me, and I'm not going to give up on those people in Atlantic City when it comes to housing, substance abuse, mental health, employment, education, homelessness, hunger, food insecurity, addictions, veterans, and health disparities. So I'm just introducing myself to you, I love Atlantic City, you people are so good to me, so nice to me, and if there's anything I could do, like I said, I was in a homeless shelter on Baccarat Boulevard twenty years, I have full-time employment, I'm not in drugs and alcohol, and you know, I want to give back, because you know, I just, you know, because those people you see walk, I hate to say that, those people, but walking down the street, I was one of them, they didn't, people didn't give up on me, and I'm not going to give up on those people. Thank you.
Anthony Brower, Friends in Action.
Hello, councilmen, hello, everybody in the audience, good evening, thank you for your indulgence of our time. As I've given our clerk, I'm like, hey, what we have looking to do this upcoming schedule for Friends in Action, a couple of things. One, is May twenty-sixth, we're looking at having the second Community Day Bike Ride, where, as we did last year, I'm like, hey, we counted the gala, I'm like, hey, and then we had some other people ride with us, we rode twelve-six wards from the southern Garden Basin all the way through the city to come down to the Chelsea Heights, upper and lower, and then back down the boardwalk back to Garden Basin. Well, we're gonna let the comp do it again, and on May twenty-sixth at one o'clock, we're going to all rendezvous back at Garden Basin, and once again, do that nice long ride and stroll. We had a good turnout, I'm like, hey, so we look forward to having as many people once again come join us on this free Community Day Bike Ride. It was even very nice to have the police department riding with us as well on bikes too, so they show a full engagement. So the hope of this time, we have the police, fire department, public works, everybody come out and join in the bike ride. The next thing that we have on the agenda, which give all your councilmen, is something that's going to be the treat, our senior citizens prom and gala, the fair, scheduled for July the fourteenth. Now, this, unlike anything else, is a number which we're looking at between five to six hundred senior citizens from sixty-two on up, that's the first thing. Our senior booth will be giving information through their coordinators as far as the people to come. All of your councilmen are going to have a challenge now, because each one of y'all is going to get a ticket, each one, and that ticket is for you to escort a senior. So whether it's a mother, auntie in the community, I'll be speaking, your mom's open in show party, she got a date already, but it's a prom, so it's you and a date, okay? So I mean, when they have the floor opened up, I'm like, hey, for all of these, the first dance, I expect to see nine people up there, and I know more than a mile on the dance floor on the first dance. I'm like, hey, the location is still what we worked on right now, but as I said, the date is July the fourteenth, I'm like, the prom will be from six to nine p.m., from six to ten p.m., a good enough time for the seniors, also the majors as well. But we're looking forward to having as many come, to come out and to celebrate our seniors. And lastly, I would say that we have also helped with hard rock and our residents with the jobs over there. So if anyone is trying to, you know, procure employment, they come to the headquarters to help them with the applications, as well doing their resumes for them as well, I'm like, the report from Robert Lee that I got was that they have hired eight hundred residents as of this date and time. So if a man was like still trying to find employment, he comes to our headquarters at twenty-seven fifteen Otis Avenue, have applied for the jobs online and their resumes, I'm like, hey, for them to work up the hard rock. Thank you all for your indulgence.
Anthony, man, you on time.
Maia Shaw.
What was your name again?
Maia Shaw.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, residents of Atlantic City. I am Maia Shaw, I am a resident of Atlantic City, and I bring you greetings to the M.I. Care mentoring program. I have to, excuse me.
Take it down. Take it down.
M.I. Care is a program that I admire. I have to admit that there is no other program that can compare to M.I. Care. M.I. Care stands for, the care stands for connecting, aligning, restoring, and empowering. And those topics are covered through this program. I am being raised by my single grandmother, and with the help of M.I. Care, she is now raising me and my sister alone. I have been a part of this organization for over three years, and I hardly miss a Friday group session. Each Friday, I am surrounded by many beautiful women that are inspiring and give their time and guidance to the program for me and the other girls attending the program. M.I. Care is my way, is we do it for the girls, and then it's true, the mentors do it for us. Thank you for your time.
Maia Shaw.
Take it down. She got it, she got it, I read it.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
The M.I. Care mentoring program's mission is to impact the lives of our youth and young adult ladies by providing support and learning opportunities that will promote character development and life-enhancing value through effective mentorship. The care, and M.I. Care stands for connecting, aligning, restoring, and empowering, and that's exactly what the program does. The program helps us, they encourage us to do better, they support us if we're in something, they come out and support us like our second parents. Every Friday, we come together and we talk, we love each other, and we communicate, they understand us, and they help us in school, they help support our dreams.
Raleah Williams.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, so I've been in M.I. Care for at least four and a half years now, and it's just helped me so much, because M.I. Care, of course, is a program for sisterhood, and I just, I don't know, it's changed a lot of us, I guess you could say, everyone has been joining, we have, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I don't want to scream. Yeah, so basically, we have new mentors coming in, we have new mentees coming in, and everyone is just enjoying this program so much. And throughout the years, it's changed me a lot, because before I even got to the program, I wasn't really happy, I guess you could say, but, I mean, just being in the program, being around people who loves you, being around people who's there for you, it's just, it helps us very much. And there was a story, because they feed us every week, and I've never heard of it in water and ketchup. I didn't even know that was like a thing, and I didn't want it, and it tastes very nice, I wanted to know that, but, but thank you very much for your time, and that's all I have to say about M.I. Care. So thank you.
Jessica Moore.
Hello. My name is Jessica, and I'm part of the M.I. Care mentoring program, and basically what M.I. Care is, they help us with all the things that we need to do, and they, like, as I've been in this program, like, it has built up a sisterhood, and with all the mentors, I appreciate them so much for doing everything that they have. And like, I've been here for two years, and growing up, having a single parent raise me, like, they've been a second parent to me, the mentors, and like, I'm so thankful, and like, we've done lots of, like, we've been doing lots of stuff, like arts and crafts, we've worked with arts and crafts, we've built, tried to build our sisterhood, and with games, and like, I'm really appreciative for all the mentors, and I really do respect to them, and they help us boost our self-confidence, and like, they really help us with everything we need, yeah.
Arianna Wiggins.
Hello, everybody. Hello, my name is Arianna Wiggins, and I go to M.I. Care mentoring program. First of all, I just want to say, I love them so much, and they help me with a lot of things. So, I was a troubled child when in middle school, and Ashalanda looked me right in my eyes and told me I had to stop it, so, you know, I had to stop it. So, I'm just, I love them so much, you know, they provide, they provide food for us every single week, and every first Friday of the month, we have to dress up, because people come and they talk to us about businesses and how to dress properly, like etiquette, I don't know. And, I don't know, I just, I just love them.
Let me guess, get a party started, aren't you?
Nazira Gantz.
Hello, I'm Nazira Gantz, and I've been a part of M.I. Care mentoring program for the past three years. M.I. Care mentoring program is, has opened, no, M.I. Care mentoring program helps, no, is a program that helps mold young ladies into strong women. For over the past three years, M.I. Care has opened me up to many different experiences, like going to Washington DC to an African-American history, heritage museum. And on first Fridays, we have multiple speakers come in and teach us about living in the real world, such like finance, fitness, and personal hygiene. We also have dinners for special occasions awareness for different things, such as drug and alcohol awareness, gun violence, and teen pregnancy. Overall, this program is such a big influence in my life. One day, I hope to come back and mentor myself, and to all the mentors, I'd like to thank you for hard work and support, and I love you.
Shalanda Austin.
Greetings, everyone, greetings to our city council, to our mayor, and all those that are in their respective positions. I am Shalanda Austin, I am one of the directors and the founder of M.I. Care mentoring program. I brought these young ladies out tonight, because the last time we was here, they didn't get the opportunity to come, and then we thought it might not be a good idea, because we were trying to find out what was going on with our check. But I thought it would be a good idea for them to come tonight, because not only will you get to see them and you get to feel their hearts, they are really transforming into young, and it's not just M.I. Care, it's a community effort, and it's a family effort, so we are thankful for that. So I actually came in the ketchup store. I'm old school, so I know how to make it stretch, but the young ladies don't, so, because our program has grown with mentors and mentees, we have now about thirty girls that we mentor, we have fourteen mentors, we have five that just signed on just this week, which we have to stretch things. So they were eating like they do every Friday, and we ran out of ketchup. And they said, Ashalanda, there's no more ketchup, what do we do? So I'm like, put a little bit of water in it. They said, no, we can't put water in ketchup. Now, that's a funny story, but it's funny if you have to make it stretch. It's not funny if you were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars to make your program run efficiently and effectively, and you have monies to overcome these obstacles. That's something small, but there are bigger things. We do drug and alcohol awareness, we do etiquette, we do, we had TD Bank come in and talk to them about finances, we do things about, we have a respect factor that we do, we come to the schools, we aid the parents in what the children are going through. So my, I said I was going to try to come every month, I didn't come, but I did want to say to you, Mr. Mayor, do you know when you will be signing off on the check for M.I. Care mentoring program?
Any day now.
Yeah! So then, it looks like my work here is done. Thank you so much, thank you.
Yvonne Sutton.
I really don't have much to say, that's okay. I really don't have much to say, Shalanda pretty much said it all, and we all, we are working hard, everybody's pitching, and that's all, we were really just wanting to know when will we get the assistance that we were expecting, and thank you for everything, thank everybody, we've been patient, you've been patient, I appreciate it. And the girls, they wrote these stories, they wrote scripts on it, their own, because it really is, the program is really different from the beginning, and I could tell you how each and every one of these girls have changed, like, they do a good job, thank you.
Johnny X.
Good evening, council, mayor. Good evening, everyone, a couple of things I wanted to ask about. Number one is number three twenty with the raising of the tolls, I get that, we need the money, but it, people that do come visit here spend a lot of money to get here to begin with, so maybe not going to full seventy-five, maybe doing a fifty cents, doing an increase in a year or two laterwards, will probably soothe the pain a little bit, I'm just saying, just jump up to seventy-five cents for marketing purposes, I get it, I support it, but why don't we just do it in tears? Three fifteen with respects to the Bartram Avenue Farmers Market, I walked past it the other day, the sign looks in disarray, so whoever I can talk to, I'd like, on behalf of the Duck Town Tavern, to donate a new sign for the Farmers Market on Bartram Avenue, so whoever's got a call, just give me the bill, whatever. Thank you for your support with the bike tour, I've been speaking with Mr. Mike Bender, that's great, and on behalf of John Henderson, who has business elsewhere this evening, thanks to the city of Atlantic City as well for going back to Beta Field for the Seaford Fest, I know we did miss it over there. Another thing is with the baseball field, can we consider putting solar panels on that large roof? That would be a huge source of income, and possibly on the city one as well, too. There are companies out there that with a flat roof, they will go re-secure, line it with a special coating, so it does not leak prior than putting the solar panels on. I'm in, uh, talks with somebody now, Alan Angeloni, uh, is in process as well, too. Um, and with this new law that, uh, the governor's doing, it'd be a layup of a, uh, source of income to, you know, support things that are, they need help, uh, obviously, help some of the organizations out, maybe toward sending money their way. Uh, that's pretty much it, thank you.
Shakita Thomas.
It's working here.
You want to speak louder, just in case.
Oh, I can speak loud. Um, good evening, everyone. I really actually don't have much to say, um, except thank you. I was thinking all work, like, at work all day, what could I possibly say, um, to ask for your help, but, um, I'm actually a mentor of MI Care. So, let me start over. My name's Shakita Thomas. I've been in this program, um, since it started for the last five years. Um, I joined, when I was growing up, there was really nothing else I could be in except in double ACP. So, now that I'm an adult, I wanted to give back. So, working with these girls is something for me to give back to the community. Um, like myself, I notice a couple of you are also in the community, Mr. Chabaz, Marty, Mr. Mayor, Emeu, Mr. Fontenroy, so I know you can definitely relate to how special this could possibly be. Uh, with that being said, I just want to say thank you for your help with helping us, being able to help us transform these girls and mold these girls into young women. Um, but again, I did hear you say any day now, I just want to say, don't forget about this. Please, because these girls mean a lot to us, and, you know, I watched my, I started this from the ground up, which we've already mentioned, Shalonda Austin. And though we love these girls, don't think for a second it doesn't get rough. You know, taking them to youth expos and, you know, mingling with other mentor groups, it can be a little bit pricey, um, on the gas, you know, and, and we would love to help. So, while I'm up here, I would like to invite y'all to our youth expo, so you can understand why we need your help. Um, I'll give you a paper on what it is, okay, Mr. Marsh? Um, yeah, if you could come out sometimes, and, you know, if you could come to a meeting that we meet right across from Soldiers Home at the, um...
Community Center.
The Community Center, thank you, I was getting there. Um, if you can come on Fridays, it's from four-thirty to eight, and you can understand why we need your twenty-five thousand. So, um, I would like to see some of you there, and again, thank you for the opportunity, and we do appreciate your help.
Latoya Jensen.
She just got in the elevator.
Sure. Joy Smollett.
Good afternoon, Council President.
Good evening.
It looks like this may need to be fixed now. It's kind of ironic that, um, Genos came up the same night that I was gonna say something about it. Um, they've been very bad to the customers that had walked into that building.
Ms. Smollett, not tonight. We, we are very aware of the situation, and it's always...
Okay, then, oh, well, you're aware of, I'm here to speak my three minutes.
It's Smollett, but...
You've already taken some minutes of my time.
Ms. Smollett, I'll be gonna pause it. All, all I'm gonna say is this.
You're aware of it?
Excuse, excuse me, I've been aware of it, yes.
Oh!
Since I have been Council President, I have remained consistent, there will be no personal attacks.
It's not a personal attack, it's just like Starbucks.
That was a situation...
Starbucks was a personal attack.
Ms. Smollett, Ms. Smollett, I'm, I, I have the floor, I didn't interrupt you.
No, I, yes, you did, I was speaking.
We're aware of the situation.
You already taking some of my time.
It, it has been a situation, and from what I understand, the situation has been settled. There's all sides to a story. You can't just believe everything that you hear. So, we're not gonna entertain that discussion. You want to talk about anything else?
Well, I didn't know it was gonna be a discussion, I came here to make a statement.
Okay, well, we're not gonna entertain that statement. If you want to talk about something else, I'll...
You're just singling me out and not making a statement. Yes, you are.
We're, we're resetting your time for three minutes, please. Please, thank you.
We already took, uh, uh...
I'm resetting your time. Thank you.
Baltic Avenue Street, not a freeway. We need to try to do something to slow that street down. People come through that street, if you're, are you gonna talk to them or are you gonna listen to what I'm saying now? People come through that street, and they're flying up and down that street, back in, in the back of City Hall. So, we need to get something out there to slow the drivers down. Four ninety-seven, the BA is not here, I was gonna ask him that. Will there be a charge for the valet parking? Will we be getting anything from, for the city for that? One ninety-seven. Two eighty-three, temporary budget. In the temporary budget, do we have anything for the repairing of the roads? Three twenty-two, what department is getting the office furniture? All these questions were for the BA, but he's not in the seat. Um, maybe Mayor, you might know something about that?
Yes.
Okay, then you can answer whichever of those questions you know that they about. Thank you very much.
Before the family leaves, just so everybody understands, with Genos, none of that happened when Gina was alive. Gina was a great guy, he helped the community, and I'm sorry you had to hear that. Please leave with good thoughts, he is honored, most, everybody loved Gina or Dave, but, not to fix the two up what happened after, so, please leave with happy thoughts and be proud of why you came here tonight.
It means a lot, thank you.
Thank you.
So, tonight's temporary budget is for sixty-eight thousand, that is to accept the grant that Councilman Chabaz, you talked about under planning and development, that's to insert in the budget the money for the lead and poisoning grant.
Oh, okay.
Now, we do know, as far as the paving goes, the Department of Transportation has awarded the city additional money. When the official award letter comes through, that will also be added as a grant to the budget. Uh, if it's prior to the introduction and adoption of the budget, it'll be in the budget. If it's afterwards, it becomes a chapter one fifty-nine and gets added to the budget then. So, there is money, was published, the mayor issued a statement, I guess about thirty days ago concerning DOT funds that the city's received. So, there is money gonna be in the budget one way or the other for paving. Thank you.
Thought I was pretty loud. Are you, talk with the mic, please.
Okay, the sixty-eight thousand dollars in the temporary budget is for the grant that Councilman Chabaz talked about under planning and development, that we received a notice of award for sixty-eight thousand and change for lead and poisoning. As far as the road paving, the mayor issued a statement from the mayor's office about thirty days ago, where the city is a recipient of some funds from the State Department of Transportation for grants. Once the official letters, award letters come from the state, that'll be in the two thousand eighteen budget. If it's prior to the introduction, then it's right in the budget. If those official letters come after the budget is introduced next month, then it'll be a chapter one fifty-nine, be added to the budget. One way or the other, it'll be in the two thousand eighteen budget, what the State Department of Transportation has given us for, um, paving. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the public like to speak?
Uh, I have a question for the lady.
You wanna, you wanna answer a question? Joy said she had a question for you. Your floor is yours.
Your question.
The furniture, thank you. I believe one of the questions was, uh, which offices is getting that furniture? I think it's a special event. Um, got to, they were making some furniture from all the casinos, and had to go through a resolution process. Um, the second, uh, question, I believe, was one ninety-seven. Um, we haven't, um, sat down to negotiate, um, what the price is, uh, going to be for each slot choice. But we have, we, we haven't really sat down and gotten that far in the process.
All right, that's it. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Not Mr. Chief.
John Farrell looking one on you at ACFT. I had a slight family emergency, I apologize that I was late today, I dropped my kids off on back. Thank you so much for the award, it means a lot to all of us. Guys have been under a tremendous amount of pressure over the last few years, last year most importantly. Um, this means a lot, I'm gonna go back, let the guys know, and, uh, you know, you will always have, uh, your backs, and you guys have ours, and I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed, let's move the agenda.
And we have ordinances on second and final reading, and for the record, ordinance three is being adjourned until further notice, until June.
Further notice.
Until further notice, okay. We have ordinance eight, and this is a bond ordinance, we appropriate any amount of eight-hundred, eighteen thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars, fifty-eight cents.
Uh, may I have a motion? Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed, discussion? Saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Ordinance nine is an amendment to the ordinance implementing the South Inlet Transportation Improvement Authority.
Move it. Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Anyone from the public like to speak? Saying none, public portion is closed, discussion?
Question. Is this is a implementation of another authority? Who has the oversight of this authority? Is it the state function?
None.
No, this is, uh, it's approved by the casino, meaning development, but it's just a, uh, ordinance implementing, uh, transportation improvement.
Yeah, this is an authority, it's a body.
It's a transportation project. It's not a new, it's a question, colleague, it's not a new authority.
Okay, it's just, it's, the way it's worded, it suggests that there is an acting authority to suggest that. So, that's why my question, if this was a created authority, who is oversight? Because we have to be very cognizant of how many people and how many organizations seem to be created in this bureaucracy and design, so I'm gonna be certain that I know.
I agree, I agree.
If there is authority created, then we understand where it is, who's involved, and how it, it plays in, in our budget and the city itself.
Right. It's no impact on our budget, but I hear you, so, so you're saying there is no authority? No, I'm saying there's no impact on our budget, and it's going to be done under the Casino of the Development, uh, Authority, and it's not going to, uh, impact the taxpayers of City of Atlantic City.
This, this, looking at the body of this ordinance, this doesn't, uh, speak to that. This is simply changing the name from Revel to Ocean, which is a customary thing, but the signage that you see, the grand, big old signs, City of Atlantic City doesn't do that, that's funded through South Jersey Transportation Authority and CRDA's involvement, because, quote, that still is in the tourism district. So, all of these bodies are together, has no, nothing to do with authority and oversight regarding the city and anything else, this is just a direct, uh, signage. And I spoke to our solicitor, um, we understand that you guys, just putting on a public record that you guys, Jack, if you can come up? We understand that you guys came, uh, to an agreement with North Beach, um, about naming the area and everything.
Absolutely.
Yes, but we just wanted to say, um, I asked Anthony Swan this morning, and I asked you as well, if, once we do, um, with South Jersey Transportation Authority, if they can include the North Beach signage with the arrow, whatever way that y'all agreed on it, now, knowing that City Council will, uh, pass that resolution for, for the ordinance on first reading in June, and the ordinance on second reading in July, because what we don't want is them to come back and have to take it down and do it again. So, it, it is gonna pass, so we just wanted to, to take that to SJTA, so that way, you know, everything can just happen, because we would've had it on first reading tonight because we couldn't do it, it would've took yours back to first reading, and we didn't want to, you know, compromise your opening by having people come into Ocean Resort and saying Revel.
Well, just, just to clarify, for the purpose of the record, this was a, um, when Councilman asked about the authority, uh, this is an old road improvement agreement that was done by Revel to do significant transportation improvements at no cost to the city that was done between Revel, SJTA, and the CRDA. Part of that was to put up some directional signage for Revel. All we're doing is, we're asking permission to change out the name Revel to the new name, Ocean Resort. Uh, as to, uh, Mr. Bray, we indicated that we had no problem cooperating with him, and we will cooperate with him. We, we can't control what SJTA does.
No, but I'm just saying, we just want to have that.
Absolutely, but we will cooperate with him, we told him we would give him this cooperation, and we stand by that. I have some representatives here from, uh, Ocean Resort, if you have any questions. But we, we really appreciate, just want to say thank you on behalf of Ocean Resort. The city has been a tremendous advocate of project, and, uh, all the officials helping us open, including the solicitor's office and, uh, licensing, and, uh, we're really lucky to be here, we appreciate it. Mr. Pike, who is North Beach? Okay, well, North Beach, that's, that's Mr. Bray's project, the housing development that he's implementing, uh, Washington Bray. What's the project, okay. Just, I need enlightenment, because, again, to give me clarity, something's very important. No, I understand. Because we have a lot of situations where we suggest something, but a legal document, I was told, I learned, legal documents, something you stick to, and something you have to be specific of. Absolutely. And if you're not specific of, specific of, it'll come back and bite you. I couldn't really mark that. I don't like anybody biting us anymore, so, so I'm asking for a clarity. And I just want to make sure the bodies are exactly as intended, because if it's South Jersey Transportation Authority, then it should be identified, not the South Inlet Transportation Improvement Authority. Right. It should say South Jersey Transportation. Mm-hmm. It probably intended, CRDA, and that's more exact, I can understand that, but the wording... Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Saying none, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
As worded, no.
No?
As worded, no, unless it's worded exactly how it needs to be said.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Eight in the negative, one in the negative. And for the record, ordinance ten is being adjourned, it must go in front of the planning board prior to the council.
Uh, yes, may I have a motion to group, uh, ordinances on first reading, regular resolutions, and new business? Move it. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Start with front of the wall. Anything?
No, good.
Tivitt?
Um, no, good, thank you.
Chang? I just want to close classes six H. Six H. Randolph? Good. Marsh?
Good.
Kurtz?
Under plan... Under planning and development, uh, just to reiterate, I am abstaining on, uh, three oh eight and three oh nine. Um, I'd like to co-sponsor three thirteen under planning and development. Then, three, uh, both of the new business, uh, resolutions, three twenty-four and three twenty-five, and that's all.
What, co-sponsors?
Yes.
Three twenty-four?
Yeah, pardon me, uh, co-sponsoring, um, three thirteen in planning and development, and then on the new business, co... on the new business, co-sponsoring 324 and 325.
Okay.
Um, 308 and 309 were extensions. Yes, and that's all, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Chabaz?
I'm all right.
Delgado?
Um, Paul?
Yes?
I'd like to be a co-sponsor on 6F.
6F?
6F. Or it's on the first reading.
Fantasy Way, okay.
Council President? Through you and the chair, could you just, uh, clarify for the record, what, 325, it doesn't appear on our ballot? Council Kurtz is the, uh, resolution on the new business, if you say you want to.
Yes, the seafood.
It's going to be a one-gone revolution?
It went through committee and everything.
I, I'm not doubting it at all, it's just that it's not on the agenda, and I wanted to know on the truth, the public would like to know what it is, that's all. It's not an issue at all.
You trying to hold up our seafood?
Yes. I would not.
I, I, I have to, I want to abstain of 319 on their administration and government affairs.
319, okay.
Paula, uh, could I also co-sponsor 325, please, since this is my word?
Okay, 325.
You have a company with 6F.
Fifth one!
Delgado, six F? Six D?
Um, and, and on 325? I noticed something in here.
I don't even have one.
Um, this is the part of, uh, the agreement that I communicated, uh, with Mr. Henderson, and, and the body of it, under the third, whereas, says, "Consideration for mission, license, and premises, the city shall operate with patron parking areas, and the event retain all revenue." That's absolutely correct, but where it says licensee will pay $1,000 for all fees, mercantile permits, and health inspection fees under the city code, um, that's not correct. The correct version should say that we agreed to let him pay a $1,250 flat mercantile fee, but all health inspector fees will not be waived. So if you read in his language and interpreted it, it would say that he's paying $1,000 for all fees, so I want that put on the record as well.
Chang, clearly, yes.
Mr. President, can we, uh... Just trying to be a student up here. Right, you're very stupid, can we?
That's why I named Amelia.
Can we change so we can get this done today on this? No, yeah, no, this is on the spot, change, that's it. Very stupid. Solicitor, Mr. Solicitor, can, can you, is that too much language?
No, it's, it's fine, it's just a conversation.
Very stupid. Thank you very much.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So he will be paying for the health inspection and so forth, is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's in the documented email that is passed around, is Chang, for transparency purposes. You know, we, we, you know, we, we gave him a deal that we thought was fair, and, you know, we wanted the event back. And he agreed to it. Yes, so, I just wanted that.
Can we make sure Director Pinch gets a copy of the finalized, uh, email?
Yes, so just to be clear, Paula, we've actually amended that for the record to indicate that...
He'll be taking the call.
He's paying a $1,250 flat mercantile fee, and health inspector fees are not being waived.
Fire fees.
Or discount.
Okay, so the Solicitor's Office will prepare a revised...
Yes, he pays for all of that. This, this, this was just a negotiating point.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's all. He handles all that fire, the pumping works, the release, water hookups.
Okay, so we're voting on first reading ordinance 6A, and this is additional name and designation as Lucille Curly's block. 6B, additional name and designation to Virginia Avenue as Hard Rock Boulevard. 6C, revocable license agreement for the Hard Rock. 6D, amends Chapter 57 regulating job titles, and this is under, for the public safety. 6E, amending Chapter 243, establishing one-way street between Maryland and Atlantic Avenues. 6F, additional name and designation, a portion of Main Avenue as Fantasy Way. 6G, amends Chapter 197, and this is fees at Sandcastle Stadium. 6H is an ordinance to lease city-owned property, known as 500 North Annapolis Avenue to the Vietnamese community. 197, Resolution 280, 288, 289, 305, 308, 309, 310, as amended, 311, 313, 317, 276, 283, 293, 297, 298, 299, 300, 301, 306, 307, 312, 314, 318, 322, 273, 319, 320, 274, 282, 315, for the record, 275 was held. 279, 281, 291, 296, 302, 303, 304, 324, and a walk-on resolution for every, a license agreement for the seafood festival, as revised, to indicate that it'll be a $1,200, $1,250 flat mercantile fee, and the health inspection fees will not be waived.
Oh, I apologize, but could you add me to co-sponsor 6B and 6H?
Madam Clerk, before you call the vote, um, I have to make our request, uh, permission to make minor changes to two resolutions, 308 and 309. The minor revision is to make the resolutions subject to, um, revision by the Solicitor's Office, nothing that would change the substance of the resolution, just some minor revisions that we have to make in the resolutions.
As amended.
Okay, with the exceptions, co-sponsors, Councilman Chang, 6H and 325. Councilman Delgado, co-sponsor 6H. Councilman Kurtz, co-sponsor 313, 324, 325, abstaining on 308 and 309. Councilman Randolph, co-sponsor 6F. Councilman Chabaz, co-sponsor 6B, 6H. Councilman Tivitt, abstaining on 319. All in agreement?
Yeah.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, with the changes noted. We have executive session, which was amended to add item D. And that was Lawler with an E versus City of Atlantic City workers' compensation.
Thirteen minutes.
Do we have a motion?
Hey, Jack, where you going to do this?
Do we have a motion?
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Jimmy? Marsh?
Moved by Chabaz?
Second.
Second by Chang?
Break the cycle again.
That's A, Barris versus City of Atlantic City, B, McBride versus City of Atlantic City, C, Moore versus City of Atlantic City, and D, Lawler versus City of Atlantic City. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado? Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Eight in the affirmative, one in the negative, about how long?
Eight minutes.
Thirteen minutes.
Ah, thirteen, I'll take the thirteen.
Then we're back on the record, we have four resolutions, which are settlements after executive session. 277 is a settlement for Lawler, 285, settlement McBride, 286, settlement Barris, and 287, Moore.
May I have a motion? Can we group together? May I have a motion, we'll get it. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Call a vote.
I'm sorry, Randolph, I didn't hear what it was. Randolph and...
Chabaz.
Randolph, Chabaz, okay.